Given that it is 7:03 a.m. and we are still lacking some planning board members, but we do have a quorum. So we are going to start this meeting. Today is May 4th, 2021. This is the regularly scheduled Rundle Planning Board meeting. And present with us, we have Marty Kane.
Yeah.
Tom McGinn.
Aye.
Jack Reitz, not, sorry, Jack. I'm reading your name under Rogers on my screen. We have Roger Maran with us.
Yeah.
And I'm Rich Canong, the chairman. So we have four members. We do have a quorum. So we'll start with a call to order and approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have approval of the minutes for April 20th, 2021. We have a public comment section. We have three public hearings on proposed land use ordinance amendments. Then we will have referral to the Board of Selectmen for those same three proposed revisions. We get into pending applications. We have Strickland Lane Commercial Building Site Plan Review Pre-Application, A Proposal To Construct A 7,500-Squared-Foot Building On A 6.41-Acre Parcel Tax Map 34 Lot 3A, Serviced By A Driveway Through 1312 Portland Avenue In The Downtown Business District And The S.P. Shoreland District. Kevin Lord is the owner. Henry Hess of Sebago Technics is the owner's agent. We then have three new applications. Southern Main Refrigeration is before us with a major conditional use pre-application. Irving Road Subdivision is before us with a minor subdivision pre-application. Sylvain Terrio has an amendment to an approved subdivision that he wants to discuss with us. And then we have three ordinance revisions. We have proposed amendments to Land Use Ordinance, Section 9.3.12 Cluster Housing Planned Unit Developments. We have a discussion with action, proposed revisions to Section 1.7 of the Residential Growth Ordinance To Establish Auxiliary Methods For Issuing Growth Permits For Multifamily And Age-Restricted Developments. Item number three is a proposed removal of campgrounds as permitted uses in the R3 and R4 district. Other business that the town planners report, assuming that the town planner actually makes it in. There he is. He just has to unmute himself so that he will be present. And at the meeting, okay, so I need an approval of the agenda.
I will move that we approve as written.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Tom, seconded by Roger. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor. Marty?
Yay.
Roger?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Moving right along to the minutes of April 20th. We have a majority of the members present that were here that day.
Yeah, I'll move that we approve as written.
Second.
Okay, Tom made a motion to approve. Marty seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And Ted Redway is here, but I can't see his picture yet. Well, he was here. He went away. Oh, there he is. Welcome back, Ted.
Thank you.
Moving right along, public comment. This is that section of the meeting where if you are a member of the public and you have comments that you want to bring before the planning board, either there's something you would like us to look at in terms of the ordinance or anything else that relates to the town planning, now is the time to ask. And seeing nobody has their hands up and nobody is voicing any questions.
Most of them are all blocked out. No pictures.
I know it. We have no pictures from more than half the audience.
Do we got any, do we have any response even if they're there?
But, well, those of you that are in the meeting, if you look in the lower left-hand corner of your screen, you will see a mute button for the microphone and a video button. If you have a red line through it, please click it so that it goes to show, start video so that you will show up on the screen. And the same thing applies to the mute button. If you want to enter into any conversations, you're going to have to unmute yourself. That being said, we do appreciate that you are here and we hope that Ted, can you send Susan the link? She can't get in.
I'll have to jet it. I'll have to get my phone downstairs. Sorry.
Ted, I can get that.
Yeah, Tom's gonna get it.
I'll get it. I have it right here.
The other way she could do is just go online to the town website, pull up the agenda and hit the link right there. That's what I do.
Yeah, that's what I did last time, too.
It's the easiest way to do it. I'm gonna get my phone while we're waiting for her, just in case.
Yes, Susan. Okay. She's gonna grab it off the website.
Oh, I just sent it to her.
Okay, so moving right along. Hearing no public comment from anyone. Item number one, public hearings. We will start the public hearings. It is now 7:10. Item number one, Proposed Land Use Ordinance Amendment. List Home Occupation Type 1 As A Permitted Use And A Home Occupation Type 2 As A Conditional Use In The R2, R3, And R4 Districts. Just to clarify, home occupation 1 is a very small, you know, not a lot of activity that would go on. You would not be generating a lot of additional traffic. We want to make that a permitted use in all of the residential districts in town. Type 2 would allow you to have an employee. And you would be able to generate some traffic. That's a conditional use permit based upon the nature of the business and where you are located. Does the public have any comments about the home occupation type land use ordinance amendment?
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
As long as they're registered as a home occupation. Sometimes, a lot of times, they aren't registered.
That is true. The requires a home occupation type 1 requires just a business registration that's given to the basically to the CEO to file. And the type 2 requires staff review permit to do that. Those are the review processes for those two types of home occupations.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about that particular item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:12. We will move on to item number two, Proposed Land Use Ordinance Amendment To Amend Section 8.6.1 Establishing Lot Dimension Standards In Conformance With Section 15.8.2 Of The DEP's Charter 1000 Guidelines For Municipal Shoreland Zoning. Okay, so there's Susan. She's coming in.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Glad you got in.
Can't see you, Susan.
Click your video button.
There you go. Okay, does anybody have any questions about item number two, amending these conformant standards to bring us in into conformance with DEP Chapter 1000? If you'll remember, we had asked them, we had wanted to reduce the frontage from 300 to 200, was it, Ted? And we actually amended the ordinance and said, let's do that. And then DEP sent us back a statement. So it said, we don't think so. Can't do it.
This is a different one. This is
This is a different one.
This is the one where we, we've been approved three times by them and then they noticed in the last the last month that we didn't have four lot standards that they wanted us to have. And they said, oops, yeah, we approved you three times, but oh, yeah, you're missing these sections from Section 15, 15A of the 1000. And so I said, all right, fine. We'll put it in. We'll be in conformance with you. And how come you didn't pick up on it? They just went oops.
They went, we're the state. Who knows why we didn't catch it, but we did now. Any discussions on that particular item? Okay, I will close the public hearing on that one at 7:15. Then we will move on to item number three. Proposed revisions to the Residential Growth Ordinance. Amend Section 1.4.1C To Exclude Accessory Apartments From Growth Permits And Amend Section 1.7.1E To Eliminate The Point Selection System For Issuing Growth Permits Plus Other Amendments In Support Of The Amendments. This came about because we found that accessory apartments used three permits last year, three building permits, which put us over the 40 that we had established as the residential growth ordinance to start with. Given that these are accessory apartments, they're restricted in size. They're usually what is referred to as mother-in-law apartments or grandparent apartments. So we thought that it would be a good idea to just you still have to come in, you still have to let everybody know that it's there, but you don't have to use a building permit to get it accomplished. And then we want to, on the advice of our attorney, we want to eliminate the point selection system for issuing growth permits. Anybody have any questions? Any comments?
Yeah.
For the public, Marty, for the public. Okay, nobody has any comments. We will move right along. I will close all of the public hearings at 7:16. And we will go to the referral to the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to take each one of these items one at a time and then just have a vote on all three of them at once, if that's acceptable with the rest of the board.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Item number one is the Proposed Land Use Ordinance Amendment To List Home Occupation Type 1 As A Permitted Use And A Home Occupation Type 2 As A Conditional Use In The R2, R3, And R4 Districts. What say you, gentlemen and lady?
Or yes?
I agree.
Yay.
Hey.
Well, I think that made it pretty unanimous, even though we didn't vote on it, but that made it pretty unanimous. So let's make it official. Somebody make a motion so we can vote.
I make a motion. We refer the Proposed Land Use Ordinance to the Board of Selectmen.
Second that.
Aye. I second, I vote for that.
Okay, Susan says yes. Tom?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Marty?
Yay.
It's unanimous.
Question.
Yes.
Along that, do we, we're suggesting it to them. Does the selectman have the opportunity to approve or disapprove it under, in the town report?
I would imagine they are the selectmen.
I'm asking so that either we're all in favor or not all in favor. So there's no contest when it comes up for a vote.
Well, this has been mentioned to the Board of Selectmen. We don't know. We haven't heard
We've played this game before. That's why I'm
We haven't heard any feedback from them.
Okay.
So the next, the next item is the Proposed Land Use Ordinance Amendment To Amend Section 8.6.1 Establishing Lot Dimension Standards In Conformance With Section 15A2 Of The DEP Chapter 1000 Guidelines For Municipal Shoreland Zones.
Aye.
Make a motion.
I did.
Okay, so Marty's made a motion. Can I have a second?
Second it.
Tom is seconded. Any
Whatever, whatever he motions.
What was read?
Hearing no discussion. Marty?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item number three, Proposed Revisions To The Residential Growth Ordinance. Amend Section 1.4.1C To Exclude Accessory Apartments From Growth Permits And Amend Section 1.7.1E To Eliminate The Point Selection System For Issuing Growth Permits Plus Other Amendments In Support Of The Amendments.
I move forward to the selectmen.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, made by Tom, seconded by Susan. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Marty.
Along that lines, are we a developer can't come in and grab six or eight permits at one time? Do we not have a monthly
We do. We do.
Okay, that's my question.
This, this particular section of the growth ordinance has been before the Board of Selectmen and they do agree with it.
Okay, thank you.
And then just for clarification through the chair?
Yes.
The role is that basically no more than two permits per person per month and no more than six to an individual corporation or a person within a year, within the calendar year. That's the way it stands. It hasn't changed since frankly, I think 2000, 1978. Those numbers haven't changed much.
Thank you. So move.
Okay. So we'll refer, we'll send them up to the Board of Selectmen. Next item is pending applications. Strickland Lane Commercial Building, excuse me, Site Plan Review Pre-Application, A Proposal To Construct A 7,500-Squared-Foot Building On A 6.41-Acre Parcel Tax Map 34 Lot 3A, Serviced By A Driveway Through 1312 Portland Avenue In The Downtown Business District And The S.P. Shoreland District. Kevin Lord is the owner and Henry Hess of Sebago Technics is the owner's applicant. We did a site walk out there today. And Marty, Susan and I were on the site walk. Marty, did you see anything?
Just several things which I mentioned was about buffer and fire.
And that, thank you for reminding me, Marty. When we left there, I looked north on Route 1 and could not see a hydrant. I made a left, I made a right and headed south and I got all the way down to the Arundel House of Pizza before there was a hydrant on the other side of the road, well over 1,000 feet back. So we, we're gonna have to have that addressed when the plans come before us.
Sure, the distance to the hydrant?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess I do apologize. I wasn't able to be there. I know Steve Doe was there in my stead. But can you, can you enlighten me a little bit as to what the board members who were there kind of noticed onsite or felt any opinions on the stream and its location, whether it's there or not?
I looked at it and on the initial impression that I got, it was a stream because you could clearly see it flowing through. But it was right there where the culvert is. It was, you could see it flowing down toward the culvert and on the backside you could see it flowing out. But once it got a little bit further down, it just dissipated and spread out into just like a wide, I'd say it was a pool, but it wasn't even a pool. It was more of a swamp.
Perhaps, perhaps even some wetland.
Yep. Lot of wetland, lot of wetland out there.
Okay, so as the stream determination then potentially not there, would we just be held to wetland setbacks for that particular area?
Yes. Now, we were told that there is a letter from DEP stating that it is not a stream.
Correct.
And if we could get that letter, it would be greatly appreciated.
Sure, yeah, I believe it was sent with the pre-application, but I can send it via email or hard copies to the town if it's needed.
I see Ted shaking his head. He does have it.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in your packet.
Oh, okay.
In the application packet. What this will require, miss through the chair?
Yes.
This will require the planning board, if planning board is in concurrence with that, planning board should make a motion to amend Shoreland zoning map To Exclude A Stream In This Area. Because the map clearly shows, I just redid the maps. Thanks, Henry.
Sorry.
Let's blame it on Steve.
Okay, we'll blame it on Steve because he's there.
We always blame it on Steve anyway. The planning board should, excuse me, the planning board should make an official motion that the, that the stream designated through this property should be, should be re-designated or the street, the street protection district should be amended out. And, but we do have a wet one and I think, I think we all agree that it's probably in its totality, we'll probably want to do some measurements. You probably want to do some offsite investigations, but it looks pretty, it looks pretty, pretty clear that it's probably going to be Shoreland overlay district, which means then you have a Shoreland overlay district setback that may affect your grading plan. The other issue that I made a reference to is that the planning board has a series of of exceptions, so special exceptions criteria that you might want to look at in the Shoreland Zone District in Section A, that you might be able to get that, that setback reduced based on the morphology of the stream, which we know is probably going to, it's pretty much going to be scrub and forested. And some of the topographic issues. So you might want to take a close look at that and you might want to consider petitioning the planning board for a possible reduction. The planning board can always reject it. They don't have to give it to you. But if you can prove that certain circumstances there do apply and that you might be able to get a reduction in that setback. But I think the first thing that I would recommend is that you investigate whether or not that is two acres contiguous wetlands per our regulations because it suspiciously looks like it's over two acres.
Yeah, and it definitely looks like it's more than two acres.
Okay, well, we can, we can certainly take a few measurements out there and make sure in a cursory glance of, of the overlay district, I did notice some of the setbacks and as well as some of the wetlands determinations there for the two acres. Now, is that, does that only count the wetlands if it's a linear distance of 100 feet wide in specific directions? So anything beyond that would not be counted or?
It's 100, it makes the assumption of 100 by 100.
Okay.
So it's that old DEP regulation of what can take We took a look also at the National Wetlands Inventory, the later one. This is an earlier one that we used. And it looked like that did meet that criteria. So, but our ordinance is really based on field determination. Prove to this planning board that it is contiguous two acres, then the issue of setbacks will be just basically a DEP wetland setback and that's it.
Okay. So I guess we'll probably look to sharpen our pencils a little bit for this one and we'll hope to come back to you guys with a plan and either a petition or hopefully maybe something just under the two acre mark. But we'll see kind of what we get out in the field there. And I appreciate everyone's time out in the field today. That was fantastic. Thanks for taking the time to go out there and look at the site.
Just to clarify, it's not just the wetlands that is on this particular piece of property. It's that entire wetland.
Yeah, it's, it'll be contiguous to anything out there, not just the property line. Correct. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Susan, any comments?
Through the chair.
Yes, I have one comment. And that would be, it would be nice going forward if before you cleared your lot and got your permit, that you didn't clear your lot.
Certainly. I'll talk to the applicant about that and make sure that he, know that that happens in the future then.
Yes, that will be really helpful because even though forgiveness is often given, sometimes it's not. And so in your case, it will be in all likelihood. But I think, and out of respect for the planning board as well, the lot shouldn't be cleared in anticipation of a permit before it's been presented to the board.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that it was cleared. It was news to me that that was cleared without any additional permits or in that area was done or cleared without any notification. So I, I'm sorry to hear that that happened. We'll certainly make sure out of respect to the board that that doesn't happen going forward in the future.
That would be terrific.
It's kind of, it's through the chair.
Yep.
It's kind of obvious by seeing all the trees there with the wood process there and everything else that it's been done. But the second question is on that stream, who classified it as a stream in the past so that we can declassify it?
It showed up as a blue line on the map, Marty.
By whom?
Best United States Geological Service.
Does that go through the state?
No, they kind of supersede the state.
I'm just, that's why I'm asking, even though we've had DEP out there, not classifying it as a stream, but just to give us backup along the way. That's what my question is.
Well, if you remember, we did actually have a definition very close to what DEP had for a definition of a stream. And then we determined, the board determined it was a little too complex and that we should just make it very simple for all, both applicants, residents, property owners and the board to make it any blue line on the USGS 307.
Right, but it's, we made it, what, if it's a blue line on the map, it's considered a stream, but conditions in the field can overrule that. And in this case, that, that is what I think is happening. Because I don't, I, like I said, when we first got there, I thought it was a stream, but I'm not convinced after having walked down downstream from where it was supposedly a stream. I don't, I didn't see any moving waters, any kind of sign that would indicate that it would qualify as a stream. There was no, there was no channeling there. It just spread out.
Thank you.
I guess if there's any other, Mr. Chair, if there's any other feedback from the board or anything, I believe I've, I've got the direction I need to make progress and hopefully bring something back to the board in the future dates here.
Excellent.
Through the chair.
Hang on, Marty, go ahead.
Uh, make sure we aren't cutting right up to the property line for buffer for protection.
That's true. It does appear on the northern side of, of the lot where the granite marker is. It looks like everything was cut right up to that point.
We'll certainly take a look at, at what we need to do to make sure we're ensuring any buffer requirements for the ordinance through there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Susan?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Look forward to getting your application.
Thank you.
The next item, Irving Road Subdivision, Minor Subdivision Pre-Application, Proposed Three-Lot Cluster Subdivision On A 15-Acre Parcel Tax Map 19 Lot 1 Off Of Irving Road In The R4 And Shoreland Districts, Randic Trust Randic Trust is the owner applicant and Jason Baffietis is the PE, PE is the owner's agent and I don't see Jason here.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
You want, you, you want, that's item two. What about item one?
Oh, you're right.
On your new application.
You're right, Marty, I looked at item one for Strickland and then my, my eyes went straight down to item two, thank you. No, don't be sorry, thank you. Item one under new applications is Southern Main Refrigeration, a major conditional use pre-application. A proposal to operate a contractor yard one in an existing home and commercial building located on a one acre lot, tax map thirty lot one B at seventeen eighty-nine Portland Road in the DB one district. Keith Ewart is the owner and applicant and I saw Mr. Ewart.
Yes, I don't know.
There he is, okay.
Hi.
Now, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Ted. Wherever Ted went. He went away, I don't blame him. He didn't want, he didn't want me to have to ask him a question, I believe contract the yard one in DB one is a permitted use.
There he is.
There he is.
Yes, sir.
Contract the yard one in, in DB one is allowed, correct?
Yes.
Is it, is it conditional or permitted? Conditional, okay.
Yeah, the, the question for the board is, given the, given the nature of the activity, uh, the board, you know, should take a hard look at that and determine whether or not actually the applicant is should be def- defined as a commercial service or as a contractor yard initially, uh, when we first, we first discussed this um, it automatically felt like a contractor yard, HVAC contractor who does servicing on on refrigeration units and it's in the, it's in the building category. However, in talking to the applicant and hearing about what vehicles he had, I, I consulted with the town clerk's office and about vehicle registration and if you notice that what we have for vehicles um, they're regulated under contractor yard one. None of his vehicles are really qualified as a Schedule ten vehicle, which is the minimum of vehicle that we uh regulate. All of them are, was called commercial zero zero classifications, which are basically yeah, passenger, you're basically at vans and trucks and, and I, I believe that's right, isn't that Keith?
That is correct.
So, the question is, given that and given the fact that he's really does keep a lot of equipment there, he does have meetings there with, with staff at various times, he does have, he does keep equipment there, but he doesn't keep a lot of it, it's basically more, as you, as you can read in the narrative that he supplied, um, it does uh he's, he's in that gray line between a contractor yard and a commercial service and the first question for the planning board is how would you want to rule this as a contractor yard one or as a uh commercial service?
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
All right, this becomes a gray area also because the reason it becomes a gray area is because the way that different towns register a vehicle, okay? Even though they may be under ten thousand pounds or whatever for inspection purposes they're putting commercial plates on almost any truck or anything else unless you specifically uh specify a uh a different type of plate, so automatically when you see the word commercial you think it's a commercial unit, but it may not be because for an example, like Keith may know, the fact is, he could put a PC plate on it, he could have a, a uh ha- uh troop plate on it or something other and that would not be classified as a commercial vehicle. So this is where we have to also look at as a board to see that just because the state's registering every truck or every van as commercial, it may not be commercial.
I have a question, Rich, as well.
Yes, Susan.
So, um, and Keith, you may know this and certainly Tad may have an answer, but I read your application and I think your use is fitting whether you're a service provider or you get a contractor one yard. My question is, does one constrain the other? So if we give Keith a service permit as opposed to a contractor one yard does that in some way limit him down the road, because what, really what we're talking about here um, the dividing line seems to be the nature of the commercial vehicles that he has on site. Um, I personally think, given where he is physically and the kind of service he provides, I would like to provide him with the permit that gives him the most flexibility within reason and um so I don't know, Ted, Keith, does one limit him? And does one give him greater flexibility, so if he wants to expand and do other things with his permit?
Well, I, I would think that, just, just to interrupt you for a second, uh, I would think that the contracted yard one would be more restrictive than the commercial service. It, it restricts the, the type and the nature of the vehicles he can have. Person, when I, when I first heard about this and it was an HVAC shop, I thought to myself, this is a service industry, why does he need a contractor yard? And personally, I, and from the, from the point of view, and correct me if I'm wrong, wrong Ted if he's a service business, he does not need a permit, does he, in the DB one?
Uh, no, he, uh, that would be a permitted use, he would not need a uh site, the only thing he would need would be he's planning to do some uh parking modifications and that he needs a site plan approval for. But for the actual use, that would be a permitted use in that district, the building's already up. Um, any kind of accoutrements that are associated with that, like the additional parking, he wants to move the parking to the rear. He has uh employees that come for, as, as he says, a, a staff meeting uh twice a week. You know, adequate parking for that, showing up on the site, meaning, you know, our parking lot requirements for, for the, you know, the DB one district. Um, it's a site issue only on how he's going to lay that out.
So would that be a staff review?
Sorry, go ahead.
Would that be staff review or planning board?
Be planning board.
Okay.
So Keith could always come back and apply for a contractor one yard permit if his business changes.
But it would be more restrictive for him to do so.
I'm sorry?
It would be more restrictive for him to do so.
But right now, I view him, like you, as a service business and not as a necessarily a contractor one yard applicant. But Keith, unless you have some compelling reason why you want one as opposed to the other um, do you have a?
I don't, I mean, pretty much where we're at with the business is where we'll be, um, I think I agree with, it's more of a commercial service. Uh, you know, we don't work on anything there, uh, all my guys take their vans home at night, it's very, my son lives there as well. So as, as I did state in the application uh in the narrative, uh, there's very little going on there. The biggest thing I, once in a while I have construction trailers I need to bring there uh, just temporarily between jobs, there's not too many of them, there's maybe three trailers but uh those are usually always on jobs for a long period of time. Uh, so I think I prefer the contractors, I, I, I don't know enough about it to answer the question, I would prefer the one that obviously leaves me the most flexibility for sure, uh, but whatever the planning board allows me to do or, or may allow me to do is, I'm happy with.
Tom, any, any thoughts?
Uh, I, I'm, I agree with Susan's question, that was a good point to bring up. Um, is it, this type of, this is exactly what we want on Route one, so it is I, I don't think you'll have any problem getting a permit either way, but um if, I, I don't know what the limits are, if you were service, Ted, do you know if, would be, would there be a residential constraint there? If he was um a service business?
Well, there, there's always the residential aspect in the DB one, it has to be ancillary to the primary purpose, which is the commercial business aspect and in this case, it is.
That might be something that, that tips in favor of going with the contract yard because i- if, if your son, that's going to be his primary residence and you're not really using the building for the business, then this, this, it brings up other issues. Um, I think a, a contractor yard would be quick and easy, as far as I'm concerned. Um, you're not storing things there at all, really?
Occasionally we store a little bit of stuff there.
You'd be allowed to.
I, yeah, I mean, well, we might change an HVAC unit and have, have it on a trailer for a night or something like that but nothing's left there for any long period of time, I like to keep it as clean as possible over there.
Yeah.
Uh, most of my stuff, I mean, ninety-eight percent of our equipment is shipped to Cody Crane in Auburn, Maine. It's just sometimes we get some unique situations that we need to store something there, but that is, that is very much the exception and not the rule over there, so I don't know if that helps answer the question as far as the equipment.
It, it seemed like what you're saying would certainly be allowed as a contract yard.
Okay.
Either, either one of them.
As a service business?
I, either this, this commercial service or contract the yard one would be allowed. It's just that the yard one is more restrictive in terms of what you're allowed to do. It, the, the nature of the vehicles that you bring in would be restrictive. Uh, I think, I personally think you'd be better served by, by going the commercial route. Again, like Ted had pointed out, you, you'd have to come to us and because you need to modify the pavement a little bit to have parking areas for the, for, for your meetings, but other than that I think you would be much better served and it would be a lot less restrictive.
I take your advice on that, I don't know enough about it to, I, I go with your recommendation on that, uh, you know, I I'm the owner, I don't know much about this stuff, uh, you know, just trying to save a little money basically, so uh, so that's uh, whatever your recommendation is on it, Richard, I'll go with that.
Any thoughts, Marty?
Yeah, I think it's more service, but also two at the same time. The fact is that his son may be living there, but they also may have communication in the house for the business so that it falls under service in itself along the way, because it's also the same time, it, the house is also security for the business.
There's no downside to Keith taking, he doesn't need a permit to be a service business?
That is correct, he does not, he is in allowed use, a permitted use, so he doesn't need anything from us.
So if it materially changes, your business model changes in some way and morphs into something else uh, that requires a permit for a contractor to your, you should apply for one.
Okay, yeah, I think if we go with the commercial service right now and provided, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll review that a little more, just to un, make sure we fall within what we should be on the commercial services and, and try to stay right within those constraints, absolutely.
Yeah, I think there's no, there's no downside that I see to having you do that.
I'll go better than I thought so far.
Okay, so I guess the, the next thing that you'll have to look at, uh, get together with Ted and talk with him about uh uh pavement for, for parking.
Certainly.
Other than.
I would recommend the sta- the planning board do a site walk uh of the, the site uh to tell the, the um, the applicant uh exactly what we would be looking for, what you, the board would be looking for. So you'd be familiar with the site, the applicant would be familiar with what your expectations are, what your needs are, so he doesn't uh unnecessarily spend money or unnecessarily spend effort on things that he may not need. Great.
Okay, that, that's a good idea.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
The only, Keith, make sure you, if you do have uh most of your lighting, is it on the building in itself or, because you aren't playing in a big parking lot or anything else?
No, it's just pretty much perimeter lighting, security lighting uh right around the building, uh, there's no like you know, we're not really going to have a parking lot there because we don't really need much of a parking lot because you know, I have six guys that show up there for an hour a day and that's pretty much it. Uh, the house, the house that's there and actually sometimes there's more parking, the two cars there than the business creates, so.
Services go.
Great.
So uh you guys want to, want to do a site walk before the next meeting or do you want to do it on a Saturday or some other day?
I'd like to do it before the next meeting if that's possible, but.
And we'll probably be doing a, at least one more at uh tonight as well, so um, can we do them back to back same night?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd be good with that, whenever you guys want me to meet, um, I can meet at any point, you let, you know what's convenient.
This, this will, probably won't take long, it's, it's all, it's all clear and dry, so um or if we shoot for five thirty again on um.
On the eighteenth?
Eighteenth, the next, that would be Tuesday, the eighteenth.
Make it, make it a motion.
That's a motion, Tuesday, five thirty, eight, the eighteenth.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, made by Tom, seconded by Susan, have a site walk at five thirty on Tuesday, the eighteenth before the next meeting.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Question, if he's going to put any parking, at least show, show us either by stakes or some another where it might be.
I will do that prior to the, prior to you guys getting, that's a good idea, Marty, so I think that'll work good.
Okay, excellent, well, all those in favor, Susan?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Marty?
Yay.
Roger?
Yay.
It is unanimous, we will see you at five thirty on the eighteenth.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you for your, all your time, everybody, I appreciate it and uh we'll look forward to seeing you on the eighteen.
Yeah, see you then.
Yeah, thank you.
Now we'll take up item number two. Irving Road subdivision, uh, the minor subdivision pre-application. I do not see Jason here.
No.
Is there anybody here from Randic Trust? Hearing nobody, seeing nobody. Then we are going to table this item. If, and we, we will notify Jason that his item was tabled because there was nobody here to, to represent him and we're not going to discuss it without him.
Great.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, I uh, I uh did text him and left him that message, if he does show up before we get to uh uh the end of the, the meeting, would the board consider talking at that point?
I think so. Would you guys, would you guys be good with that if he, if he gets, gets into the meeting before we're done?
That's reasonable, yeah.
As long as that's not totally last minute Charlie.
Yeah.
Okay.
Witching hour.
Yeah, there is.
Item number three, Sylvain Terrio subdivision amendment to an approved subdivision. Proposed division of a six point two eight acre parcel, tax map thirty lot thirty dashes zero one containing two duplexes into two lots with a duplex on each parcel served by a common driveway located at Two Terrio Drive off Log Cabin Road in the R two and Shoreland districts. Sylvain Terrio is the owner applicant, take it away, Mr. Terrio.
Yes, I'd like to split the two lots off, like you said.
Okay.
I am asking for one waiver.
And that waiver is?
For the driveway not to be deducted from one lot.
I'm wondering if there is enough developable land to create two separate lots.
Yeah, there's 6.2 acres total combined. Six clean acreage to be able to split it. I think, we have a few issues. One is how the driveway will be done. It will be an easement and that may not, that won't be double the amount of driveway, which would help. The other issue is the wetlands that you know, it's a, you can't include that as part of your developable land.
Yeah, that's where I'm having the issue. Because without, without using the wetlands in the calculation, there's, I don't think there's enough land available.
Can I say something here? On the wetlands question, there is another waiver that was requested on the plan to not deduct the wetlands because it was not deducted in the initial subdivision approval. This is an amendment of a subdivision that was initially approved in 2000. And I believe the rules then did not require the wetlands to be deducted. It was obviously approved with wetlands that time. And it was also amended in 2012 with the same approach of not deducting wetlands. So we asked for that waiver to be continued based on the, I guess if you want to call it grandfathered status of the subdivision.
So if you recall, Rich, and I think I have this correctly, when we did Raymond Akers, do you remember that?
Yeah.
And he had an issue because when he pulled his initial permits way back when, about the same period of time, that the wetlands was not considered a part of the overall calculation of buildable land. He was required, or he to buy additional land so that he met the current, you know, qualifications.
Yeah.
This goes back 2000 and 2012. I mean, how far back, I mean?
We did, we required them to go out and buy over an acre of upland that was, that would have been buildable in order to meet the criteria that they needed for the property.
That's exactly right. And
I think the same thing would apply here.
That would be my thoughts.
But I, it sure doesn't seem like that's an option to, there's no, there's no land that's really available that, but.
So we, but we required one applicant, I mean, it has to be applied sort of equally, don't you think? In my opinion, it should be applied equally. And the same situation applied to Raymond Akers and he, you know, jumped through a lot of hoops to make that happen. And if it's not available, that's unfortunate, but it's just the nature of the two circumstances.
There is a different, fundamental difference here with this. This is sort of a unique situation where there are already two buildings on the property, each is a duplex. Sylvain is not proposing to add any more units. So looking at it from a density perspective, there will be no increase in density. Same number of units per acre regardless of whether it's upland or total lot area. He just wants to divide the two buildings so they'll each be on their own lot instead of two buildings on one property.
And what's the compelling reason for doing that? What, I mean, rationale behind it? If it can't be done, is he detrimentally affected by the fact that the lot couldn't be subdivided?
He would have to sell the whole property as opposed to selling one and keeping the other or selling.
Why not create condos out of it?
That is the other option. If we can't get an approval for a division of the lot with an amended subdivision, we would have to go the condominium route.
I would think that the condominium would sell for more money than, than a duplex. Because you've got, you essentially got four units to sell.
That's true. It's possible. But this is where I wanted to go first to the planning board since it is already an approved subdivision and it would be an amendment to see if this is possible to divide it with no additional impact on the property, really. The driveway's already in place, the utilities are in place, the buildings are already constructed. It's just a matter of drawing a property line between the two of them.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Question. Of the way the property is, common driveway and everything else, who and how or whatever, would there have to be a road agreement for one? Two, second of all, if the property is divided, would it be, is there enough to divide the property so that the two properties would have the common wetland acreage on each unit?
I understand the question, Marty, and I'm not sure. When I look at the map, I'm not sure.
I'm just throwing it out as thoughts.
Oh, no, I understand that completely. I'm just saying, when I look at it, it appears that the property on the left side is almost exclusively wetland.
Yeah.
But if I remember correctly too, did the two properties did not have or do have a common well between the two, the two different units?
There are two separate wells, I believe, Sylvain plans to drill another.
I'm just.
In response to your question about the driveway, yeah, they would have to have a shared road maintenance agreement on that.
Right, right. At the entrance, the common part, it's only like the first hundred feet that's a shared driveway and then it splits. So your question, Marty, I believe, was that you wanted to know if the two properties could be divided so that each had roughly the same amount of wetland? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, density.
Well, unit density wise, it is equal. There are two buildings with two units on each lot. But wetlands, as you can see, is all kind of over on one side of the property for the most part. So it wouldn't be, I don't think it would, there would be any way to divide it so we can split the wetlands up equally and still meet.
But what I'm just trying to get at is acreage wise.
Total acreage, yes, it is roughly equal. The way we're proposing divided, it's just a little over three acres for each lot.
Unfortunately, the property is so wet that if it was, if you're looking for a permit today, it'd be tough to get more than one building there at all. This looks like there's probably just maybe not even three acres of buildable land, maybe just about. So the whole entire property is, looks like it's about half wetlands. That makes it a tough, tough situation.
Agreed, right. If it were being proposed as a new development today, I agree, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be divisible.
Yeah.
And I think we have to continue in the, in the direction of the policy that we created back when we did the last one where we told the applicant, if you want to build a house on that second lot, you have to go buy enough upland so that you can. Yes, we're being asked in this case to divide a lot, but we're being asked to divide a lot in such a fashion that 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 lot could not legally support a house under today's rules. It would, it would end up violating the entire ordinance. It would violate the state's ordinances. And unless there is some additional upland to go with it, I don't see how we can say we'll give you a permit and allow you to divide the lot. I think we need to look at it and say, you're going to have to find some other alternative.
So the direction of the board at this point is not to consider anything as far as an amendment to divide it based on the existing structures already being in place and approved.
That is my position. How the rest of the board feels? Susan?
I agree. I would say find another solution.
I'll go along with that.
Okay, Roger, Tom?
Yeah, I wish there was a way to make it work, but it's, it's not even close. Unfortunately, it's a tough, tough situation.
Marty?
I'm following along.
There you have it. The board is unanimous on that position.
Okay.
Excuse it? So all the waivers are denied?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
At this point, next item is ordinance revisions. We have three ordinance revisions. Yeah.
I think Jason just showed up.
Oh, he did. Okay.
All right, just.
We will, we will come back to the ordinance revisions and we will have a discussion with Jason.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Jason.
Sorry about that. We got a heavy rain coming tomorrow and I was stuck out at a problem site. We were trying to get it all buttoned up for erosion control before we had a big problem. So I scooted home as fast as I could.
So Jason, can I make a comment in anticipation of your explanation of your proposed project?
Yep.
A while back, not too long ago, I suggested to Walter Woods because for various reasons that he just make fewer lots
Yep.
and call it a day. And if you take three lots and make them two lots, I don't think you even need to be here, do you?
No, no, we don't. Other than that, you know, there's, yeah, like you're talking with Walter, there's 15 acres of land here and we got not, over nine acres of uplands. As you know, that extra lot is, you know, of considerable value to the client and we're not, so this particular layout, I thought worked kind of quite well. It's almost the same thing we did down the road that just got preliminary approval. Essentially, it is the same thing. Down, right down the road there with Arundel's Keep. I'm thinking that this layout kind of works better. You get one driveway entrance. It's a sheer 16 foot driveway, three lots. They all, we, you know, we put a lot of work into this. We've got the hydro geo that works real well there and I kind of like this, this little design. So I think we would like to keep that third lot. Although I do get what you're saying.
It just seemed like you had a lot of challenges to eat that third lot out. So, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels about your solutions, so I won't express my opinion on that. So I'll hear what others have to say, but.
I'll just add, I certainly understand trying to third lot out of it. I'd do the same thing if I was. But the big question, is it doable?
I would, I have a question for the town planner. In the notes here, it seems to indicate that, that there was non-compliance with the lot dimensional ratios. That is part of our ordinance, is it not?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's got to shorten up the lots. We have a three to one ratio that's buried in this subdivision ordinance. You can't have a length of lot longer than three times that of the width. I think they originally did this when they did the subdivision. Actually, I think it comes from Patton Corporation, to be honest with you, to avoid spaghetti lots. This is straight out of the state state subdivision ordinance and it's buried in our subdivision ordinance, but it's there. And it requires that lots not be more than a three to one ratio of width to a length to width. So we do have. That's easy, right. And that's easily fixable on this one. We just, it's a real simple sketch plan. We just drew the lot line straight to the back, but we can create open space along the back of those lots, easy enough. There's probably a hundred feet that we're not even allowed to touch anyway. Right. I think your biggest issue, Jason, is you're in the Kevin Lord camp right now. You've got that, you know, that stream that's off to the, on the border, on the northern border of the property? Yeah. That's on our map as a, as a stream protection district. Which is interesting. Yeah. Because it's definitely. I always thought it flowed the opposite direction. Yes, it does. I don't think it does. I think, I think it's just map wrong. It, well, our map could be wrong. And what I'm saying is that the contours looked like it was flowing towards the road. It absolutely is. Okay, then, then it shows up on the USGS as a, as a blue line. We show it on our soil, on our Shoreland zoning map as a stream protection district. And if I slap a 75 foot setback from the the upland edge of the wet, of the wetlands, I mean, you're, I mean, you're a living room of lot three. Yeah, and that's right. And so, so that stream definitely flows down to Irving Road. I actually got the plan in my computer now, but the, and then it kind of, and then the stream sort of disappears into what wouldn't be identified as a stream anymore. And then sits there, you can see sort of the wetlands fan out. And then if you see, there's like a little circular contour right on the top right hand side of the window, that's the culvert location, I believe. And then it goes across the street. Right. Well, there's, right now, we have it listed on our map as a stream protection district. So the issue you've got would be just like the first app, we're going to have the same issue was if you can convince the planning board that it really isn't a stream, that it's a swell or is, does not meet our definition of the stream or it should not be justified as a stream, then you could petition the board perhaps to to, you could challenge the designation. Otherwise, you're going to have to put a 75 foot setback in there and that's going to change the design of lot three. Yeah, right. Yeah, right. Exactly. Because I'm just measuring 75 feet now and it takes half the building envelope away. You can, you can actually figure it out for yourself. You see that 25 foot setback from the property line for the building envelope? Just multiply that by three to be, you know, and then you're in the, you're in the middle of the lot. I mean, not saying it can't be done, but you don't want to, I mean, and these, these footprints that are drawn in, they're like 3,800 square foot houses, you know. It's probably a good sized house. Sure. 400 square foot ones. That's what you're going to ask for.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Jason wasn't here prior when we were discussing the, the first thing about the stream, but Jason, they had along the way, DEP did not declare it as a stream. So it gave some leeway to something else along the way.
Right, they, the uh, the the first applicant that was here, Strickland, got a letter from DEP saying, there's no stream there. The guy went out and looked at it. And and because he had the letter from DEP, we said, oh, yeah, it shows up on the map, but if it's not really there, onsite conditions make all the difference in the world.
Yep, yep, and I can certainly, you know, I can get a, I can get um I can get them out there for that, if that's uh, if that's the direction you want to go, that's no big deal, they do that for free.
Well, if if they're willing, if they say it's not a stream, then I I can't speak on behalf of the rest of the board, but if they tell you that that's not a stream, that carries a great deal of weight with me.
Sure.
Because I, the the only other thing I have to look at is the NWIS inventory, and it's got a big fat blue line on it. In fact, I have it up and I'm looking at it on my other monitor.
Yeah, and and I believe that they that they anticipated that that is flowing actually into the, they got the direction wrong.
Ah.
I think they think it's going into that large wetland complex. Yeah, I did too, actually, I I had I accused the uh USGS of screwing it up until I saw your your um survey, and then I went, oh. They got it right for once, wow. Yeah, yeah, there is a saddle up there, what we call a saddle, which is a a break in in directional flow. I'm surprised. So I, so actually, well, let me, let me follow up on that, so Susan was indicating that she felt like this was a two lot uh split and not a three lots, but um which that is certainly a, if if the DEP calls that a stream and it it fits your definition of the shoreline zone, then it's almost like we get there from a de facto status, because you cut that, you you put that swath of a of a setback on it, and then, you know, you really only have two breathable building lots, so so I don't know that I would even, if it's the will of the board, that, you know, the 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 temperature taking is going to tell me that, well, three lots don't really work, uh regardless of whether that's that that is a shoreline zone setback or not, then I I, you know, I I'd probably stop right now and the tell the guys to save some money and just just do the lot split. However, if if the board feels like if that isn't, you know, if if that is not a stream, do the three lots sort of feel right for you, anything else notwithstanding?
Well, Jason, since I expressed my initial uh trepidation with your current application or current plan, I think you would do well to call DEP and see whether or not they have a mis, you know, and made an error, or perhaps would give you a different assessment of the stream on the property, and if that doesn't work, then I probably would go to the two lot solution.
But if it does work, I'm not, I'm not holding you to it, Susan, I just, if it does work.
Do it, if it was my land, I'd go to DEP first.
Yep, yep.
Anybody on the board really, we don't want to stop you, as you know, with the Rundle key, we did everything we could to help you you know, come up with a solution, Ted, ACT, and all of that stuff, and of course, we want to do that for all the applicants, so.
So, oh, and that was what I was going to add, you know, with the three lot split, there there is that ability for for ACT to even pick up the open space, um which is adjacent to the open space that's that they they just, they're just picking up, I can't say they picked up, because we we haven't, we haven't done the paperwork yet, but so that that's a somewhat of a hidden benefit, although it's probably not all that.
Yes, address it first with DEP and then come back.
Sure, and so ju- just so you guys know, if if DEP goes out there and they give us the all clear, I'll probably, it's just a three water, I'll probably just go straight with the preliminary applications submitted, is that, that all right with you guys? It's not, minor. Yeah, right, so, oh, right, oh, yeah.
That's fine with me, as long as it's fine with the rest of the board.
Yeah, that would be fine with me. As I go, I agree, the 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 stream is the whole, is ninety percent of the issue that we're faced with.
Yep. Not a problem.
Good enough. Does the board have anything else for the applicant?
Staff does, one other thing.
Yeah, we we got a schedule with sidewalk.
Well, it. I think you guys, I think you guys have been there, yes.
Yeah.
The earlier version where we were squeezing five in there, can you imagine that? We were grabbing more land, but yeah. I I think the issue, well, yeah, you were grabbing land for the next lot, the upcoming lot, the issue, uh, I forget, the only time the planning board would really want to go would be um, if he, if you were to get a DEP um designation that it wasn't a stream, then you might want to go and verify that, you know, just just for your own sake, because you'll have to make a change, the shoreline zoning map.
Yep.
You have to say, we're making a change, the shoreline zoning map, and and to do that, you have to put some eyes on the scene. You really should.
I think we should hold off on that until Jason comes back, and just in case it's uh, you have your decision made at that point, rather than us to a sidewalk and.
Because if if they come back and say, yes, it is, then he's going to end up with two lots and it won't, we won't see it anyway.
Yeah, right.
Come back and say, no, it's not, then we're going to have to go look at it.
If they, if it's bad news, yeah, you guys won't sniff me on this one again. It's too bad, because it's good design.
Yeah, it is, it looks, it looks pretty good. Okay, let let us know what DEP says, and we can proceed forward from from that point.
Will do.
Thank you very much, Jason.
Yep, thanks, appreciate your time, thanks for bearing with me, getting my ass over over the computer.
Not a problem, not a problem. Okay. Ordinance revisions, discussion with action, proposed amendments to land use ordinance section nine three, nine point three point twelve, cluster housing planned unit developments. And I know I had that around someplace. Let me get it the easy way, I'm going to call it up in the email. You want to throw this in with what you had on that, Ted?
Running with Jamie's hybrid, is that right?
We're going with, why don't we continue on beyond that, I'm I'm uh, I'm I'm embarrassed to say that um mom didn't pack it in my lunch.
No Oreos for you, boss.
Yeah, no Oreos for me, yeah, and and packed my 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 stuff, I I don't see it here, so. I would say we're going with Jamie's hybrid, exactly the way we talked about, what you can do is pull up your your um your uh, your last one that you had, the one I sent you. Yeah, and why don't we continue going, because there's a lot more to deal with in the cluster subdivision ordinance besides the issue of minimum lot size.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Sure.
As a public person looking at things like this, is this posted on the town website, and what is it listed under?
Ted would know what it's listed under.
Listed under Planning Board and Planning Board Submissions, and and it's also listed under uh zoning ordinance of.
Because right now, I'm on the website under Planning Board Submissions, and I'm looking at all these different things, and I don't see anything that's the current, because last time I tried to follow it as well, I didn't see the current one, so what is it listed as, because right now you have is it the amendments to residential districts, home or occupations?
No, it's summary of residential growth ordinance options for multifamily age restricted and PUD developments, is that right, Ted?
No, that's that's uh, that's for the next item on the agenda, I'll lose you guys if I don't go on this computer.
Okay, I don't mean to disrupt, but I'm just saying, I'm trying to follow as a public person, listening to what you're saying, and figuring out what it is it's called, so I can actually, so residential growth ordinance options providing multi-grids, or is that what you're talking about?
It's the cluster subdivision, it's cluster subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to see.
It's okay.
Well, for the board, let me pull mine up.
I apologize, I didn't mean to make you stop, I just was curious if I could find it.
Think we need a revamp of the website anyway, at some point in time.
Yes, we do.
So daily and daily folders would be nice, because then you could actually go to the one that you're talking about for that day versus it being going through the L U L U O O, then all the different things going.
Information on that homepage, it makes it really hard to find.
Right, so as a public person trying to follow along and being an informed person, which you want as many informed people as you can, it would be easier to kind of go, okay, this is the date you're talking about, click on this one, this is all the things you're talking about, because it can match your agenda.
Now, the the only, the only problem that we have sometimes is our files are so big that we can't, we have to put them in separate files, because we put it all as one agenda file.
It just dumps it.
Dumps it, yeah, people, yeah, that's, we tried that, and nobody in the board got it, and people would download it, it would just crash. So, in fact, we just lost people. So in any case, uh, you're right, I don't, I don't see it in here either, if we go to cluster subdivision that you guys had originally from the last meeting, which I'm sure you all still have your folders available right now.
I just, I have it online.
You have it online?
Oh, yeah.
We could send it to you, Susan.
That'd be awesome, thank you. I appreciate that.
I can try to send it to you, Susan.
Again, I don't miss to stop your meeting, continue on, I can look at it.
Next one, Ted, is that the one you wanted, the growth ordinance?
I wanted both, I wanted to finish up cluster, I I wanted to finish up cluster, and I'm sorry, I was out both yesterday uh yesterday and half of today, so I couldn't finish up that cluster part, uh, that Jamie and, you know, we had worked on everything else except for that cluster part, but we haven't we haven't finished beyond, we got so hung up on minimum lot size, because we were trying to do some innovative stuff. And finally, we decided to go with the hybrid, which I think it will work, and it looks good, but we have all those other ones, especially the ones that Susan's interested in, which are the, which are the the buffer issues. And we have not gotten to that yet, because we've been so hung up on the, on getting it right when it comes to minimum lot size and making it basically uh performance based on the soils and not based on on theory, you know, we all we want one acre lot, even though the soils can only support like four acres, because of their, their such bad condition. So um, I'm looking for my stuff right now, and I'm going to have to go in here.
Is it the proposed amendment to cluster sub uh development? Division one point two, February nine?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, well, actually, it was no, it was in, it was, it was um it was actually, the last one was in in April.
In March, wasn't it?
Oh, we had one in April.
No, we had, you had, your last meeting, you talked about it, but it wasn't available to see either.
The one I have is from February twenty-second, but we made a, we made adjustments and amended amendments to it uh toward the end of March.
Right, that was the March one. Okay. I'm going to go into.
Yeah, this was version one point four.
Yeah, we were in version five. And I can't get Red Dog on this. Can I get Red Dog? I can send it to everybody if I can just break into my computer at work.
So let's move along to the next thing.
All right, move along to the next thing, and and I will, I will, I will, I will get it up.
Okay.
Get it onto the the website right now, but why don't we move on to residential growth ordinance, which I know Jack is here for, um and 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 a number of other folks are here for. That one, they get, you should have gotten that in your packet as well, correct? Everybody have that, should be in their folder that says residential. There it is, residential growth, April twenty eighth. I think, Susan, you do have that one on online, right, okay. Um, so basically, what we come down to that is you wanted to, the board wants, the selectmen wanted you to come up with a a different method of proceeding with, how do we determine, first of all, we don't have ju- just for those who haven't been here before, uh, our residential growth ordinance basically makes it impossible to do multifamily development in the town of Arundel. It also, we we tout the need to have kind of care facilities, we have the tough need to use age restricted communities and multifamily and PUDs as a way of preserving rural character by clustering development in away from roads into the uh, into below, bu- beyond the woodlands in order to preserve a character of uh, of of the town, at the same time, providing alternative housing for a larger demographic group instead of it being completely single family homes. And yet, at the same time, even though the comp plan demands that we, that the town do this, and even though the zoning ordinance permits these kinds of activities to occur, the residential growth this uh growth ordinance that makes it absolutely impossible to 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 do a multifamily project economically and feasibly, because you only get two permits a month and no more than six in a year. You're competing with family homes, and nobody builds development, they uh, age restricted development and get doing two permits a year, especially if they're doing multifamily, we do two condos a year. And and you you just can't, you can't economically do that, and nobody in the business is going to do that. So the the dilemma for the planning board was, how do we solve this problem? And after going through this and hearing from a lot of folks, um, we had two options, and this is what I think we basically came came forward with, with the two options, and that was uh essentially, option one was the multiplier method, which we said, okay, well, we'll use, we'll use a multiplier in which a one permit would equal X number of units of for a uh, for a multifamily development, and it would be based on the uh, what the uh the the pinch, the the, what effectively would be the impact upon the town, the ability of the town to provide services. For instance, one bedroom apartments attract single people or couples and will not usually generate a child. So that's probably one of the least impacts to the municipal services, you know, two bedroom, okay, then we we're talking about a different demographic, probably a young family, could be a couple. And three bedroom is, that's where we start getting into a different demographic, that's where we're going to have a a number of different possibilities for fam- households, including children, and that's probably going to, anything from three and on up, we're going to probably have the most demand of public services. And therefore, we had basically put together that system of having a graduated or a multiplied number of permits based on the impact, and that was the chart that we had seen. And so it was a graduated scale, and we call it the multiplier method, and it's not perfect, and then Jack reads for one, pointed out some some problems with it, Susan pointed out some other problems. Uh, the second option that she asked me to explore was that we have no predetermined formulas or multipliers or caps for multifamily growth permits, that uh, all multifamily projects require subdivision review, by their very nature. They basically all require subdivision review, and uh so consequently, instead of So consequently, instead of burning down the, the whole growth, residential growth permit system. That the planning board be given authority to phase projects. To impose their own phasing and their own impact fees. And even offsite improvements, I think Dan DeBois has brought up the issue of offsite concerns and traffic from one particular project. And that the planning board actually is the only body in a position to really regulate all of the different projects that might be going on at once. Probably more effectively and in a more comprehensive fashion than just having a, a growth permit, series of growth permits for multifamily and a series of growth permits. For residential. And you'll notice in your applications that all your applications for subdivision and even for site. Site plan and even for conditional use all have that little item at the bottom of the checklist that always is wait. And that is really the F, the FIA, which is the fiscal impact assessment or the municipal fiscal impact assessment. Which sounds fancy, but it's been around for a long time. I know I've had to do a number of myself for projects when I was on the other side of the table. It actually evaluates both singly by the project involved and by all the, all other multiple projects that are occurring. It evaluates exactly how much impact this project would have on municipal services and on the tax rate. And therefore gives the planning board guidance on how those projects should be phased in tandem individually and in concert with each other. So that the community is not overrun, which is the whole purpose of having a residential growth program. The downside of that is it's a lot of flexibility and the planning board becomes the, the real decision maker of that. And is the guardian for the community to ensure that development does occur in a phased manner in which there is no. Extreme impact upon municipal services. It also has the capability of being able to move the development in the direction where it has the least amount of impact on. On that cultural, cultural icon where, that the town really wants to achieve. And that's try to have as much of its rural characters possible. And could do it in a more comprehensive fashion. Downside of that, a lot of responsibility in the planning board. It really increases the amount of responsibility you have. But it also eliminates that, this rather arcane, limited, limited number of permits that anybody can get. Which frankly speaking, as we all know, just kicks the can down the road. It doesn't stop development. It just prolongs it or puts more pressure on what we have for existing lands. So. Under those circumstances, before we, I proceeded any farther within residential growth ordinance. And we started arguing about specifics again. I think the planning board really would need to make a decision. Which one of those approaches do you think? You should offer to the selectmen or even just offer both of them and say, which one do you guys agree with?
Hang on, somebody, I believe Jack Reitz has a question. He just asked to unmute himself.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Not so much a question as some comments, actually. First of all, I'll apologize for the six page memo that I sent to all of you. And before the weekend for your reading enjoyment. And I hope you all went through it. And agreed or disagreed with me. I, I think I made my point. The school district is no longer the elephant in the room. And to that point, back 20 or so years ago. When I lived in Massachusetts and was on the budget board there. We used a, a state, I'm sorry, University of Massachusetts model. That could be used by towns to take projects and. Size them insofar as their potential impact on the community. In one case, for example, I, I worked on, on an impending project of adding 80 homes. In about a, I don't know, 100 acre development. And that happened. And, and it, it certainly had its impact on the town, but you could size it. The other point I would make too is that. I, I have not attended very many planning board meetings in my 20 years here. This, so I'll, I'll show my ignorance, but I, by the same token, I've spent my retirement years in. In our school district. And I speak their language and I don't speak your language. So my apologies, but. The, I, I, I do think that it's possible to take this proposed approach of. The multiplier method. But I, I, I took it, expanded on it a bit and, and suggested that. And then I extrapolated it out into the number of people that it would. House over, let's say a given 40 units, depending on how they got distributed in each category. That's very easy to do and probably accurate to plus or minus 5%. So those things are, are easy. But more importantly, just getting back to fundamentals here. In the six page document that I sent, I made some recommendations. And specifically. And correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the. The document that helped me with the name here, the 10 year. Plan that each town has to produce.
The comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plans. Thank you. That, I don't, I, I don't recall that it got approved as such. And, and while there was a vision statement. Append it to it. I, I really think we need to go back to fundamentals here. Take, come up with a new vision statement that will better help you. Do your jobs. And, and I tend to look at this somewhat more through a people lens. You know, how, how do we build a community of people? Because you're looking at it from a housing standpoint. And rumor has it, all those houses will be populated by people. And, and that's what I. How do you come to a balance of meeting the needs of the community? And I think that's what you're trying to do, but I tend to look at it from a slightly different perspective. And would hope that. Since I don't sense there's any terrible urgency in getting this. Completed, that would take a month or two and come up with a vision. I shouldn't take long to put a group together in our community and come up with some level of. Today's consensus because God knows the world's changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, I, I, I don't dispute what, what Jack is saying. I, I do wanna make one clarification is that. The town did do a thorough comp plan review back in 2005 with the amendment in 2007. And then when the planning board was implementing some of the business, it took a more aggressive approach to. Essentially trying to provide a little more utilization of non-residential tax base. They, they were required to have the complaint committee come back and, and review that and also do some updates to the comp plan. And that committee, which was a small, small committee, but it was, it was a committee of, of a number of people were very dedicated. Went in and, and tried to establish that, that vision, Jack, but I think it was more policy based. And one of the things I think that's lacking is that I agree with Jack that the, the town is desperately in need of actually doing a comp plan. Now, that is, that is data based. And when I mean data based is those complaint revisions were based on the. 2010 census. And there's been 10 years in between in which a lot of things have happened. Both in movements of populations, types of families and households that are moving into a, a rundle, different socioeconomic changes that have occurred. And of course, all of the expectations that change. We did do a survey as part of the economic development program. Had that done for us and it basically was, it kind of confirmed what we all knew generally, but. Didn't attack a lot of the issues that really need to be discussed these days in terms of where the town's going, what. And it did not look at what the town's needs are going to be, both culturally, but also financially and service based. At a capital, a capital investment program, a school program, capital investment program. These things need desperately to be done in order to plan for the next 10 years, the next 15 years. So I, I would take my hat off to Jack and say, yes, I, I would agree. That's one thing that. It does have to happen and it has to be based on the 2020, remember that comes out, it's starting to. And it's gonna be based on, on what the town's expectations are and how many services that you're willing to, as we grow, services are gonna increase. People need things, they want things, they want programs, they want their streets plowed. And that's gonna put. Pressure on, on the community from all sorts of different angles. And, and it's probably a time to, once again, take a very comprehensive look at how we, how we. Housing policy. Cause our housing policy really hasn't changed since 2000. It's still pretty single family based. There is a tendency to look at, at single family homes as always being baby makers. They're not always baby makers. There's a fearsome time of the school population going out of control. Family sizes have once again decreased significantly. From the last census, just the, just the county data that I've seen. And so, you know, it's, those changes are. And the planning board does need to be aware of this. These are the tools that you're gonna be using. But more importantly, the community as a whole needs to. Needs to plan for what's going to be happening in the future in a comprehensive fashion. That takes time. And I, I, I really applaud Jack's optimism on that, but I, I will tell you, it does, it takes at least a year to do it.
Susan, you have a comment?
I do. And respectfully, because I, again, worked with Jack on the school board and actually, we competed against each other for school board position back in the day. The, I'm also here as a person who's a person who lives in the town, who wants the school, who wants the planning board to consider also the environmental, which I know you do. So that part of it, we want people to come in, but we also want, as you said, the services. And also to maintain that the, the environmental aspect is happening. And again, going back to what you're gonna be discussing later. Of the, the trees and the soil and the, there's a stream that was there once that is no longer there. So the DEP can go and see it. No, there's no longer a stream there. Why is there no longer a stream there? Because we're now. Developing into more houses and more things. I appreciate it increasing to have, how people to come into the town of Arundel and to make it go, but that also affects the environment. And how it affects wells and septic and things like that. And moving forward for our community, for not only to maintain its. Aspect of it, but also to maintain the environment moving forward. So I wanted to be, to stay that as another person is again, respectfully to Mr. Reitz. And sometimes we're on opposite ends of the spectrum. But I appreciate people, but I also appreciate the environment and to keep the town as it is. And I don't mean to discuss, I don't want to argument with it. I'm just saying as a person who's going on the opposite end of that, I want that to be something to move forward. So Plan B actually works. From my perspective as a person, as a better option, because then you can review each one individually and say, well, this works with that, works with that versus it being a, a global statement. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. We're gonna get back into the planning board aspect of this discussion. I like the, the section that, that Jamie came up with. And the recommendation that we have a more blended approach where we have the 40 units that are set aside. And then when it comes to. Elderly housing or multifamily development housing, I like the idea of the planning board. Reviewing it, making the decisions, deciding whether or not it is too big. Or there are too many units that are going to be involved, where we are much more directly involved in the planning and the discussion. And we looked at it and say, similar to what we told Bentley when he wanted to put in his, the, his campground, do it in phases. And he spread his phases out over, what, nine years, I think? Nine or 10 years it was spread out. I think that's a much better deal for the town. The drawback that it has, and it, it has two drawbacks, believe it or not. One of which it is that it involves us to be a lot more attentive to what is going on. So it's gonna require a lot more work from the planning board. The, the other drawback. Is that the planning board may not want to be that involved. And some planning board in the future with that requirement might just shuffle it on and say, yep, okay, go ahead. Which I, I, I consider both of those to be drawbacks. I don't like to work any more than the next guy. But, you know, if it's one of those things that we've signed on for, and I think we need to take it seriously and, and. Spend the time, gain the knowledge, put forth the work to make sure that the job is done properly in the best interest of the town of Arundel. Not necessarily what's in our best interest. Yeah, hang on for a minute. Marty Thomas is gonna say something.
So I, I agree with Rich. I think, I think it would be good for us to be more involved in, in the decisions. However, we need to have some really clear guidelines. Because we could just be a board that doesn't want development or is all pro development and, and things, you know, that, the. Things change. And I think we have to have some, some type of guidelines to go by. So, and, well, I guess that's, that's, that's one of my big things. And the other thing I'll say is I want to go back to any type of. Formula where you have like. Bedroom, one bedrooms is worth four units, or one to four. I, I wanna be careful, and I've said this before. But I wanna be careful, we, that the only financial burden that we really discuss is the schools. And I think that is, is a death spiral because really we're encouraging more elderly people. Fewer families with young, uh, school age kids. And without school age kids, what are we? We're just, we're just a dying town, literally. The people move here until they die. I think we need that growth for, 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 for just the town spirit.
And, and I agree with that. That's one of the reasons that I think we should be separating out multifamily and, and elderly housing from the growth ordinance. Those 40 permits belong to single family residences who want to come in.
But, but does that mean, and I think I asked this question last time, does that mean that there'll be 40 for single family and then another 40 or, or 80 for other types of, of units on top of that?
That's where the planning board would come into, come into effect and say, no, we don't, we don't want that many this year. So we're gonna have a restriction. But it requires more work on our part.
We, we always go back to the rural character aspect. We, we always go back to the rural character aspect, but that is nebulous. How do you define that? And 40 a year seemed like we can retain it, but it can slip away. That's in 10 years, that's 400 new units and that's with the current formula.
But Tom, there's a natural, the town has, has natural limitations that prevent that kind of development. And when Dan DuBois was here a few meetings ago, he addressed that. And we talked about bringing water and sewer into the town of Arundel. And one of the things that prevents those kind, the kind of major developments you're talking about is the fact that we don't have infrastructure here to support that kind of development. If you read the local paper this week about what's going on in Kenny Bunkport, the idea, or Kenny Bunk, the idea of building affordable housing. So people who live here and work here aren't displaced and a whole bunch of other issues. Arundel doesn't have the capability, from what I can tell, to really support some of the development that's going on in Kenny Bunk, for instance, in West Kenny Bunk, Jason, Jason's project, for instance. And so we're, we're naturally limited by the fact that we haven't brought these services into town. And that, that in and of itself helps to limit the kind of development we have here.
That, that's just a temporary thing, just, just like the, um, the Cape Arundel cottages. And that, that was a game changer. They, they saw it was worth the investment to change the way things develop. There could be a developer come in with 200 homes and it would be worth, worth it to that person to invest in and bring in sewer in, into a residential, or, or water from, you know, somehow it, that, that's, that's the way growth happens, that someone might just step in. And what will we do when that, when that approaches us? I don't know. We, we have to be ready for that.
But I don't think a formula necessarily satisfies the, our ability to assess a project like that. I, I think it has to come to the planning board and be considered on a case by case basis.
So what would we do if, if someone had 120 unit development? And they had a mix of all this, just like is, is being proposed by Jason in West Kenny Bunk, 200 unit development, all on septic, I mean, excuse me, yeah, septic. There's no sewer out there. It can be done. Things can be engineered if, if there's a profit to be made. And I'm not opposed to that.
That's where the planning board looking at it going, okay, what are the soil conditions like? What's the aquifer like? Will, will the aquifer support? We've looked at one project and we said, we're not sure the aquifer will support that project. And they only wanted to put in eight houses.
Yeah.
And, and we had to say that, that's not a good, that's where we
That has been the limits that we've been lucky that, that, that has limited, that has constrained a lot of it. And it's, it's made for more tasteful development because of constraint, which I, I agree to that.
And we, we start looking at the soils. You've seen the study that, that Kenny Bunk Rivers study did on, on what the soils look like and what the, the potential contamination is. We start looking at them saying, you know, you, you can't put it in or you have to do, similar to what we had told Arundel cottages. They had to do a lot of pre-treatment before they decided, no, we'll just bring the sewer up because it'll be easier. Those, those are all the different things that, that we as a planning board have to look at and say, how is this going to impact us? What's, what's it going to do?
Through the chairs.
Yeah, Marty.
The fact is, we need support if you're going to have impact fees or anything else. We cannot set impact fees. And the fact is, the, if we're talking of these things, the impact fees have to be decided by, not by us, but by our, our fearless leaders. And in the past, they haven't wanted to impose any impact fees. So, and then they leave it all on to the residents. So I mean, that's all fine and dandy, but we need support by our leaders to see if any of this is going to happen. Are they willing to do it?
Yeah, I, I agree Marty, that we haven't, if cost is one of the things that we, one of the factors we have to discuss, we can't control anything about that except say, except say yes or no. I think there should be a curb cut fee or impact fee, whatever you want to call it. But we, we don't control that. That's, that's
That's, that's one of the, I, I, I think we should have an impact fee for the fire department so that they can replace their vehicles and add in, add in more personnel if needed. There should be that for the roads, for exactly the same reason. More traffic on the roads creates an issue.
But we can't set it.
We can't, but we, and, and that is something that the selectmen have to deal with.
We've suggested it and we have been, we've put down.
But so, but let's get back to what we were talking about in terms of the growth ordinance and the bifurcation of residential permits as opposed to other types of development, namely 55 and over, 62 and over, multifamily housing, you know, blah, blah, blah. So
Yes, Susan, but you still need an impact fee. If you're going to need more ambulances or anything else.
But if we don't have any control over the impact fee, it does us no good to discuss it.
That's right.
So we, I agree with Susan.
We're at a dead issue.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Well, I wouldn't say you don't have any control over it. I would say that you certainly, the planning boards can certainly produce an impact fee system and then propose it to the, to the selectmen and propose it to the town at a town meeting and say, hey, here's an impact fee. The objective of this is, is that the current residents don't pay for all the added burden that new development is going to bring to the community, that the new residents are going to pay a higher share of, of the impacts that they're creating by moving here. And that's what an impact fee system is supposed to do. And a planning board certainly can write that and present it both to, to the selectman and to the town at town meeting and say, what do you think?
Budget board.
Oh, and so if you did a fire impact fee, which immediately, you know, takes a lot of pressure off of, of, of the, the cost for additional equipment, you know, we keep hearing about, you need an extra ambulance if you have a, if you have a 55 and older community with an impact fee, I'll take care of that pretty quickly. And as you know, actually Medicare does pay for ambulance calls. But I think the planning board could be a little more aggressive about that and make proposals. That's what I think the, the townspeople and the selectmen are, are expecting. And if they're not, then there's no reason for them to object to it.
We're aggressing off of what we were trying to accomplish initially with the discussion with the growth ordinance and separation between residential permits and other types of permits. And the question is, do we want the planning board basically to be a more active participant rather than creating formulas or is there some middle ground?
If, if we don't become more active, then we're going to have, I, I agree with Tom. We have to have some kind of guidance and guidelines and be able to let potential developers have the beginnings of a clue as to what we're looking at. But if we don't, we're never going to be able to defend anything that we do.
I agree with Tom. I think there should be some guidelines that are vaguely specific. That's not
Specifically vague.
Paradoxical, but I also think that these projects need to be, come before the board. And I don't think there's such a flood of them that the current board probably couldn't deal with it.
So let, let me get some direction for, for the, for the town planner in terms of how things are going. I, and so that I want to make sure I understand it. Do you agree that we should separate out the 40 growth permits and take the multifamily and the elderly housing section? And we as a planning board can develop some standards for those, but they're treated as a standalone from the growth ordinance?
So you're going to have 40, you're going to have 40 plus?
It would be 40 single family units. And then if somebody wants to build a, a, an elderly housing complex, be it age 55, 62, 65, whatever, we can then, we, they would have to come before us and we would be very actively involved in the entire plan. We may tell them they have to phase it. We may do any, any number of different items and guidelines, and we may very well ask them for what do they call it? A, a community center for, for an elderly housing complex. We, that would be within our purview. Under the current ordinance, I don't think we can. But I think we can develop things along that line that will improve the quality of life of people that are living in those communities. Much more so than, than it would be in a subdivision.
Also, Rich, if I may?
Yes.
We mentioned roads. It's very hard to do a road impact fee because the state is here to having to specifically plan for a specific road to do a road impact fee. The planning board can always look at offsite impacts of a multi, multifamily or any kind of subdivision. You can look at what the impact cumulatively and individually of that subdivision is on the road network and require there to be an offsite improvements in order to facilitate proper traffic flow, safe traffic flow. And the, and the developer has to do it or else, guess what? You don't get a permit. And that is something that many communities do.
Well.
Especially with larger projects. And you did it with Joe. You did it with, with Joe. Actually, you didn't do it. The state of Maine did it. The DOT did it. But the town of Arundel said to Joe, you need a second means of egress and it's not going to be on route one. It's going to be out the back door. So it had a better access for our fire department or emergency services to service those people. Planning board has a lot of authority that you can use, a lot of basically negotiating power with the developer or multiple developers.
So, and, and do you think it's a good idea, Tom, to, to split them off from the 40 permits?
Maybe it is. I think we need more discussion, but my concern is we, we're doubling the amount of permits, of dwellings, you know, if, or, or more, according to those formulas. And I know they could change, but we have, I, how many times have we ever hit 40 permits in a year? Maybe once in, in the history of the town? Once we open it up to another whole category, we're going to be having 40 all the time.
I'm, you see, I'm, I'm not sure that we will, simply because we're looking at specific types of housing. We are looking specifically at elderly housing. We are looking specifically at multifamily. I'm not sure that we will end up with that, that many because the land won't support it at this point. If, if the land supported it, I would agree with you, but right now I don't think the land will, will support it.
You're looking at Scout's Way off of Long Kevin Road. It, it worked there and, and there was, it's all age restricted. And that was living within the 40 permits. If, if there was, if, if, I'm, I think we have to watch out. Will it be a, a goal rush to, to this town because we're opening the doors to age restricted development?
But again, that's where we as a planning board could say, okay, you want to, you want to put in 15 units and we may not put in any, anymore this year. We may look at it and say, that's enough. And we would have the ability to control it from that perspective. Because just because, just because you have to come before the planning board doesn't mean that we're going to get eight people wanting 20 units all at the same time coming before us.
As, as long as we have the guidelines, I, and we could be liable to lawsuits. Say, well, we, we, we let the other 15 be developed, but we, we decided you're too much for us. There, there has to be a good reason for doing that.
Right. And, and we can sit, we can come up with what those guidelines are going to look like.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
We don't want what we had years before suggested, like along the golf course.
Yeah, it's quite possible. We turned it down. What was it? A decade ago? We said, no, we don't want it.
And that was not only by us, but that was also brought up to the townspeople, not by us, but to let the townspeople know what they want. I mean, uh, you know, we're, we're saying all this, but let's have some more input from the people. I don't care, it's like how you played the marijuana poll or whatever else, not, I mean, uh, to get input so that it's just not, this is what we want, this is what the town wants.
Yep. And we, and we can do that. We, when, when the, uh, when the tax bills go out in September, we can send out another poll along with, with them saying, this is, these are some questions. This is some direction we're looking for as a planning board. What are you guys thinking? If they shoot it down, they shoot it down. If they shoot it down, we, we, we pack that into the, into the trunk and we leave it there and we move on to something else.
Well, I'd like to, through the chair?
Yes.
Yes, if we read the complaint that the complaint committee did in 2016, they advocated for the, for the use of multifamily, specifically age restricted housing and, and planned unit development with mixed housing in, as a way of preserving rural character. And, and that was approved by this, by the taxpayers at, at town meeting, both in 14, 15 and 16. They made these various improvements. So, you know, that's a mechanism they recognize and trying to preserve, preserve the rural character of the town, conserve open space and control the amount of development occurring. So they saw that as an alternative, also as a concern about having of other kinds of housing. Tom talks about housing for young families. I'm telling you, housing's going up right now, Tom. I don't know how any young family can afford it. It just can't. Half a million dollars? I mean, you know, somebody that's a school teacher, Susan, you probably have young school teachers coming into yours, into your school. You tell me, they can afford a $450,000 home coming right out of school?
No.
I, I'm not, I, I'm not saying only allow a single family. I think apartment type of developments or condos. We really don't have any mechanism for condo developments in this town. And that could have, um, condos.
When was the last time a multifamily in this town? When was the last time we had a multifamily project in this town?
Condos and multifamilies require more sewage and more water availability than, than a, what you were talking about, infrastructure is more something you should be pushing than it would be for that because there's no place to really put it.
Although, although Joe, I think that seasonal cottages, which is looking down the barrel, 360 units out there.
Yes, but Joe's situation is different.
They found a way to do it on ledge.
And Dan made it really clear when he was, joined our meeting that there really isn't a lot of political will on the board of the selectmen to do anything to change the current situation in terms of infrastructure. Am I misunderstanding?
No, that's what I was saying.
Inspired? I mean, isn't that basically what he said?
Don't have sewer.
Right. He talked about it, about bringing it up, even bringing it up route one.
Because of Paul, by the way, sir.
Okay, Marty?
Yeah.
Any thoughts or comments on splitting off multifamily and age restricted from the growth ordinance? From the number of permits, from the 40 permits?
Maybe some, but not, not doubling and everything else. Without impact fees and everything else, we still need to be able to support it, but not on the taxpayers' back.
Okay, Roger?
Yeah, I, I think that it's, it's got to be split off and we have to put a number to it. You get your 40 for residential, family growth oriented. And then you can have your multifamily dwellings in the complex. It costs a subdivision, but put them, we've got to quantify with a certain number. It's going to be a baseline.
Okay.
We have other people who are still here, but they haven't made comments, if they would please.
What about you, Susan? What about you, Susan? I see you smiling in the background, Susan. She knows she's not going to comment.
I've talked enough, I think that there should be a split up, but I do think you should have a a specific cap in regard to not necessarily a cap or percentage. And I think there should be more of an aggressive faction set up from the planning board with fees and such just to send towards the towards the selectmen in order to be a more active role in in this so that they can be some accountability for what they're, what what is projected. And also, that would also push forward your infrastructure, I thought, versus the politically is not there, but maybe we that the planning board could push forward some in order for them the to increase the growth ordinances, you need to have the infrastructure to support it.
Okay.
That's what we did with the school district, the school is built to support growth, but the infrastructure and the actual housing is not.
Jack, you you have your hand up?
I I do. I've got three or four points to make. First, Susan made the comment earlier about the environmental considerations. I just want to let her and maybe all of you know that I I'm a founding member of the Arundel Conservation Trust. And so I'm very interested in that direction as well. And secondly, as having been on the town budget committee for most of the last twenty years. I I I think that by and large, and particularly in recent years, the the growth of the community and the has has pretty much fully supported the infrastructure growth of of fire trucks and roads and ambulances and and such. And I, at the same time, I can see a need for having developers potentially participate in in easing that burden, but but by the same token, there's a balance point in my view. Because you don't want to, you don't want to drive them away. And you've got to be careful in not imposing fees that are so heavy that they walk away. The as as for the comments on schools, I I hope you've read my six page document. And I will flat tell you, Arundel has a hell of a good deal. If you look at the taxes, tax year over year changes that I put as in there as an attachment. That's my house, which hasn't changed valuation in that period. You'll see that our our tax increases really are very, very modest. And as I tried to indicate, the school is, the school district is well funded by mainly by the other two towns. We have, we pay twelve percent of the cost and have twenty two, twenty three percent of the kids. Not a bad deal. And so I I realize you haven't changed all of your minds, but you really need to look at the facts. And and the the other point would that I would make is that I I I think the uh, having a multiplicity of categories that is is good, what I couldn't discern from the that table, I think it was on page ten, was what number of permits would be issued for each of the categories?
That's that's the discussion that we've been having, Jack. Do we?
And and my, well, my my point would be that you might want to keep the number, the total number at forty. And and put a range on each of the subcategories so that you have some flexibility to adjust year to year. Because while forty is the maximum, you you've seen years when there were ten or twenty. And our our averages, I I don't know, what, twenty five, thirty, maybe over the last ten years? It's up and down and you want flexibility. And and finally, my recommendation is is what Marty, I think, really suggested, and that is that you need people's input. And and to get that vision, what I suggested was hand this ball over to the selectmen to to do something with. Let let them form a committee and put the put them in charge. Even even if it's not necessarily an official final vision that needs to be voted on, at least try to get a consensus that will provide some guidelines for you folks. I I really think you need to be more people oriented in looking at the future of this town than just strictly from a land standpoint. It takes both, don't get me wrong, but and your focus has to be at this level. But it's people, people that will make this town or break this town. And you need, you need balance. So those are my two cents plus, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. We're gonna, we're gonna have to move on from here.
I'm getting hungry.
Yep, I hear you, Marty. We're on the last item, this number three. A proposal, proposed removal of campgrounds as permitted uses in the R three and R four district. Part of this stems from the cop plan, who said they want to merge R three and R two together. Which would eliminate campgrounds. Well, it would eliminate the R three, so it wouldn't be there. The 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 reality is that we are becoming much more residential in these areas because there's no other place to put houses. And the more houses we put, we're going to find campgrounds right next door to residential areas. We need to have a discussion about whether or not we want that to happen. Whether or not we want them to be permitted or conditional. I mean, think about having a campground located right next to where you live. And how would you feel about it? And all the other fun stuff that goes along with campgrounds. I'm glad I have people on both sides of me, so I don't have that issue. Some some thought for you guys to think about, we may very well decide, leave them as a permitted use. But I think it's it's something that we need to have a discussion and 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 work on. I think I think we need to work on the rest of this stuff first, but this this was on the agenda, I asked Ted to put it on so that we could think about it. There are, there are some people who want to put a campground right in the middle of a residential neighborhood because they can. And I'm not sure that that's a good idea.
I don't think it's a good idea either.
But the ordinance allows them right now. And and that's that's part of what made me think that this, you know, we should probably discuss this and determine whether or not it's a good idea.
Question, Ted, along that lines. We have campgrounds, campgrounds need space. But we also turn around to have it limited for bed and breakfasts also. I mean, and bed and breakfast doesn't have as much impact as a campground.
Ms. Pelletier, you were shaking your head. You are, you are muted, I should tell you that right now.
It's unmute.
Be unmute.
There you go.
Well, I was in between, my husband traveled a lot and before we left, he was from Springvale here in Maine. Before we went to Florida, I lived in a trailer, forty foot trailer for a year. It had huge, this was northwestern New Jersey. And it had tremendous acreage and lots of buffer zone. It was very rural where we lived, I lived, by the way, on Scout's Way. And where we came from, north northern New Jersey was more rural than here, but that campground was very beautiful, that's why I was smiling, you know.
Okay.
I talking about, this is very interesting to me, and I'm just, I want to say that I'm just floored by all your knowledge and what you know. And I used to be involved in stuff like that for twenty years, president of a five hundred home community, and I know what's involved. But I I I find that sometimes when you shoot from the hip. And I think Richard was saying this too, I I know you don't want to have too many rules so that you, it's nice to be able to customize them as you go. Which I think is what you've been doing. But sometimes when you don't have enough rules and you're shooting from the hip all the time, you're going to shoot yourself in the foot someday. So some of you see that too.
Yeah, I think that was Tom's point.
Yeah, it it this is a difficult road, but I think that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you, we'll we'll get it worked out, it just may take us a little while.
Thank you.
Okay, it is nine twenty five. It's the witching hour in five minutes.
You need a motion to adjourn, I'll make it, motion.
Wait a minute, why you do that?
We got the planners report real quick.
Report.
No buffer discussion again. So glad I sat here the whole time. So glad I sat here the whole time to talk about that. And that that's, I I love, I love seeing your lovely faces, but you know.
Did you get, did you get the document I sent you?
I did, but we didn't discuss it, so it's all good.
It's all, yeah, and I did that.
I love that, I love that, but you go right ahead, I'm going to head out because you're going to do your report and that's great. So I'll come next time and maybe I'll have the report next time and we'll discuss it then.
Well, if it's if it's
On the agenda.
If it's on the agenda, yes, if it's not on the agenda, bring it up in the in public participation and say you want to talk about it.
Excellent, have a good night.
Okay, take care.
Good night, Susan.
Okay, Ted, you're up.
Nothing really more to report. We have a couple more applications coming in, we received a application from ACT, they want to extend their bike path through the through the their property over to link up to the Eastern Trail. That was submitted today. We don't have anything else really coming up except actually, you're gonna not have very much for your next agenda.
Well, we have, we have ACT. And yeah, we have ACT. And we can work on the growth ordinance some more.
That's what you've got, pretty much. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else, you just have, those are the only items you have, it's it's actually getting disturbing, it's getting a little slow, I shouldn't say disturbing, but things are, you're not getting as much activity as I would expect with the summer coming in. So I don't know if something's changed in the economy or land is not for sale. Or I don't think any any builder is actually backpedaling at this point, but I'm I'm sensing a change.
All of the builders I know and all of the lumberyards that I know are two to three months behind, they're they're backloaded and they're looking at it going, I might be able to start your house in August or September, I won't be able to get to it before then.
Yeah.
Perhaps why we don't get any pressure right now.
Yeah.
And they're frankly speaking, I don't know of any lands that are up for sale, so.
I I can't even find someone to go out and take a look at a roof on the house that my daughter runs, it's like.
Yep, yeah, that that's the contractor side, but I'm talking about the developer side. I'm not seeing a lot of pressure at this time. I will report also that right now, phase cottages are in the phase five B. With a a few amendments. They have pre-sold all of the twenty five units that these, that the skeletons have stood up. So they're still going very, very hot.
And if you look on Zillow, just interestingly enough, because I looked today just looking for something else. And there's only like four or five houses for sale on all of Arundel. In a really wide price range from like two fifty to six million, or whatever. So there's almost nothing. So things have been snapped up. And
So it's actually an excellent time for the plan.
It will work for us. Okay, Tom, now you can make your motion.
A motion to adjourn?
Okay. Motion made by Tom, seconded by Roger, we are done. Thank you very much for joining us. Hey, Paul, one of these days you're going to have to contribute to the conversation.
I've got some thoughts, I'll get them to you.
You just show up and you sit there.
I've got thoughts on this stuff, I'll get them to you.
Okay, I hope so.
I just didn't want to interrupt, I learned by listening.
Question, we have one other participant here, Tamara.
Tamara Casey, yeah.
I haven't heard anything or seen.
She hasn't raised her hand, she hasn't, she hasn't come off mute, and I'm not sure. She may not have video, she may be like Jack and not be able to participate from that point of view. But Tamara, anytime you want to join in, simply raise your hand and hit the unmute button and we'll be more than happy to hear what you have to say. And in the meantime, I'm going to stop the.